Order. With roll call. Anne Cremay. Susan England is an alternate, you will be seated.
Okay.
Leanne Hutchinson.
Here.
And myself. Um, Kevin, I see that you joined us, is that correct?
Yeah, the other Zoom link wasn't working, that was on the agenda.
Yeah, that, uh, that didn't help things any tonight, but, uh, so you will not be seated as the alternate, uh, it's Susan's turn to be seated at the last meeting.
Very good.
So that's our roll call and seating of alternates. Uh, additions or changes to the agenda, Jared Cremay, I see you, uh, joined us here, with that in mind, I am going to put, what I currently have is miscellaneous discussion with the school banner. Uh, into new business right after the letter of support for the pickleball court. Does anybody else have any changes to the agenda other than that? Hearing done, I, uh, take the motion to approve the changes to the agenda to make the school banners, new business, CB, and then the discussion planning conservation development, six seats. Thank you, Anne, Anne seconded, um, any discussion? Do you want to voice vote just so I can, uh, make sure that with our people not, uh, not visible to me, I can't see the hand raised, Scott. Leanne?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, motion to change the agenda by five zero zero. We did, uh, I did ask our new town planner, John Guzansky, that, uh, the name will continue, just like everything else is going tonight, uh, to join us here tonight so that we can, uh, say hi to him and, and, uh, we'll be getting started with the process of the planning conservation and development. So welcome, John. Anne, were you here when we did the interviews for, uh, so, and I know Scott lives, Susan England and, uh, Kevin, were you here when, when we, uh, were interviewing for people to help us out with the planning conservation development?
I wasn't.
I was not.
Okay, honey, I just were reminded then, John, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and then we'll go on from there, okay? Hi, everybody, both in, in person and, uh, online, um, it's good to be here. Uh, so as, as Jed said, I'm John Guzinski, I'm a, uh, a planner and, uh, a partner in a little planning firm called Taike Planning and Policy Group, uh, we're based in Vernon. Um, we have, uh, developed a bit of a, of a niche, um, working with a lot of small towns, mostly in sort of central and eastern Connecticut, um, helping basically staff them up, uh, if they, they don't have enough money or enough activity frankly, for a full-time planner, full-time zoning person, wetlands, economic development, community development. Um, so our practice takes us all around, um, about this half of the state. Um, I've personally been involved in projects in towns, um, next door in Columbia, in Hampton, uh, in Deep River, in Chester, in Essex, down along River, um, in Woodstock and in Volantown out, uh, out east. And work on a variety of projects from the plans of conservation and development to zoning regulations, um, affordable housing plans, grants, um, and I'm just sort of here to help, um, not, not really set a direction for the town to kind of help you guys uh, through that process and then help you implement, um, that, that vision. Um, and personally, I, I live in Oxford, I've lived in Oxford for almost 20 years now, um, and then I've spent a lot of time in, in, in the roads of eastern Connecticut, so happy to be here.
Thank you, John. With that, uh, I don't think I see any public, members of the public, oh, Jared, if you had a, a comment at this point, uh, you're welcome to make that.
No, I have no comments at this time, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to new business and the, uh, first item up is, uh, a letter of support for the new pickleball courts is the agenda item, um, after after we put that item on the agenda. Eric, uh, you know, I guess it was always intended in his mind to have the project be a little bit broader scope. Uh, is there anybody that did not get the chance to read through the letter of support from the planning and zoning commission that, uh, that I sent out to the commission? Okay, hearing, hearing that, I'll assume everybody's had a chance to look at it and I'll, I'll let Eric, you know, brief us on what it is that he's trying to do there.
Okay, so I think both, uh, John and I could, could, uh, talk to this, but essentially, uh, most of you know, around 2016, the town had a steep grant, actually a collection of two steep grants that they used to renovate the old, uh, athletic fields, um, at Veterans Monument Field. Um, and so essentially they did a complete redo of the field because the, the old field had gotten really bad shape. You know, they had fairs out there and driven the bar truck around it and come back in the soil, so it was badly flooded. Uh, it was set up for baseball, but we weren't really playing baseball in Andover at the time, we were more of an youth soccer. So, uh, the phase one of the project, basically including completely stripping the topsoil, um, adding the topsoil, fluffing it back up, adding the irrigation, putting a walking track in, um, and some fencing and fixing up the park a lot. So that was done and completed in 2017. And this is a follow-on steep grant, uh, to increase the utilization of that field. Um, the probably single most controversial, expensive part of that would be to install a good lighting system, um, on that field. If you go by there in the evening when they're practicing now in the fall, it'll say that you're using either one or two diesel-powered generator light banks for practice after dark to supplement the two big floodlights that the town has. So their project ambitions putting in a high-quality lighting system to make it possible to play in the evening, um, and extend that season more effectively both for adult and youth soccer. Um, additionally, there will be three pickleball courts put in. Um, as most of you know, pickleball in Andover has taken off pretty dramatically. It's gone from a starting group of seven or eight people to now, I don't know how many, but uh, David Costainian says there's, there's about 80 people on their list of pickleballers in Andover. Um, and because there's a lot of competition for time in, for the pickleball courts in the gym because there's also disc golf, kids soccer, you know, the other youth sports volleyball, um, adding outside pickleball courts would be a really good community addition. Um, we also know that we need, uh, playground facilities. I mean, we have some, we have a decent facility at Andover Elementary School, but the problem is, is that that's off limits to anybody, you know, during the school day and when the school program is active and using the field, um, and also when summer camp is in and using that equipment. So for a large fraction of the year, even though we have a facility here, it's not available to most people who want to use it. Uh, and then the last kind of part of that, the last two elements of this would be to run a water line across the street, um, and electrical power across the street, um, so that it is available uh, for irrigating the softball field because that softball field doesn't have any water, it would not be an in-ground system because under that field there are, are the leach fields for the, uh, senior housing. So we can't put in-ground sprinkler systems in, but we can make water available there, um, which is what we intend to do. And then kind of last thing would be to improve that existing dirt parking area. Um, and part of that is by paving that and then putting a paved path to both the play area as well as the pickleball courts, we should be able to make all of that EDA accessible, which is another kind of long goal that the town has is, you know, providing more EDA resources to individuals. So, in a in a sense, that's the majority, that's what the project entails. Um, this will have one thing that the commission will have to weigh in on, um, you know, if we get the grant, um, and we go to actually implement this. And that is talking with the, the electrician and lighting designer. Because of the width of the field and the location of the running track, in order to illuminate the field, we are going to need to exceed the current maximum possible height for light standards, uh, that we commit under regulations. So if we are going to do a good job of field lighting, we would be okay lighting the pickleball court at the, at the, at the height allowable in our regs currently, but we would not be able to do a good job of lighting the soccer fields. So that would, that's going to be a consideration for the commission. Um, we would probably ask that you consider modifying the zoning regulations regarding lighting to accommodate that need. Um, obviously, we're not going to leave the lights on all night long, um, that would be, you know, unreasonable. And the other reason that we prefer higher poles is that a higher pole, the lighting angle is more downward and there's less light pollution off of the site, even though if it's higher, the light can be more directed to the playing field. The lower the light is, the more horizontal it has to shine, which is not what we as a neighborhood want. So that will not show what, what the project is and what we would be calling for with this grant.
Any questions for, uh, Eric at this point?
How high are the poles up there?
Somewhere around 250, 260. Pretty tall.
They you should limit, you know, lamp posts to 12 feet. With respect to permit, you can go higher than 12 feet, but under no conditions will it be higher than 35 feet. So that's, you know, a significant increase over what our regulations permit allow. Because I was coming back from the dump the other day, I took a drive down 316, I thought I would check out the fields in Ebron over at Ram in the dirt veterans park across the street. And I found no poles, you know, they have, as far as I could tell, they have no lighting on any of their fields, which had surprised me, that's what I found when I went down there at, at both of those places. So, um, I do think 60 feet sounds pretty high, I think 35 feet is your normal, you know, powerful height out there, which is, seemed to be pretty high, and so, uh,
To do illumination, I mean, the field has to be higher, I mean, look at what we have over at UConn. Um, look at Manchester High School, look at the main school, they have, like, it's in there.
And they're high?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so I'll go check out someplace else, it just, you know, it, it seems a little too high and with, you know, one, Public Works is on one side of the field. There's a, there's a, you know, a horse barn with, with a house set well back from the road, so I was hoping that we would be able to maybe keep closer to 35 feet and still get proper illumination on the field, uh, without, uh, being too obtrusive to the other folks, but we'll have to see that when the lighting plan comes in, but, you know, when, when our regs and, and, I'm not sure what the basis was, uh, for 35 feet, it could have been, uh, plagiarized from another town that had good regs and, uh, set 35 feet was, was it? But, but that's what we've got and, uh, and so we'll see what the town does with respect to asking for a change to the regulations based on that. Certainly easy enough to make, just question, do we want to do that or how good can we be with, uh, with limiting the lamps to, uh, the 35 feet, so that's where we are with, uh, with the regulation versus, uh, you know, what, what is desired at this point. Now Jim, uh, you know, one of the thoughts when I first started considering putting pickleball courts over there was, I don't know what I saw your comment today that, uh, playgrounds are, you know, a special permit deal in accordance with our regulation.
Okay, I believe in, in, in section five, under the ARD, so the playground would be a use of right. Um, that's contrary to what I initially said, uh, I think there's, there's some conflicting rates. Let me scope that out a little bit.
I was thinking that maybe possibly we could consider all that property a recreation field already, so maybe adding pickleball courts to it and modifying the lights and that might not require a special permit, might require something less than that, uh, we don't have to solve that tonight. They, I know that it's a solvable issue, it's just a question of what's the most efficient way to get to where we want to go, if that's what, uh, the commission wants to do. And that's what we start tonight by voting on this letter.
I'll revisit that, get a better answer.
Okay. Any other questions for Eric at this point? Okay, so I will make a motion to, uh, approve sending the letter that, that I sent out to all of you and, uh, to, uh, to Eric tomorrow for inclusion in the grant package, uh, to support the improvements he wants to make over at Veterans Memorial Field. Okay, thank you, Scott. Any discussion? Hearing done, I'll call for a vote, Scott?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
Leanne? They're muted, Leanne, uh, we haven't got you yet.
There you go.
Unmuted, okay. May I have your vote, Leanne?
Yes, I, I didn't mute myself, I eventually did, but I heard the automatic voice say that I had been muted, so I unmuted myself apparently successfully.
Well, we had a little tech assist with that from Rita here as well, so between the two of you, we got your vote, thank you. Um, Susan?
Aye, aye.
And I vote aye as well, moving passes five zero zero. Thank you, folks. Next up, uh, is a I guess a request by the school and, and it may also involve a change to the regulations, we're not here to discuss that tonight, I'm still working with Jim on the most efficient way to get through that, but, uh, the school has made a bunch of banners that they would like to hang from the lamp posts around the school. And I don't have a picture of those to hang out with everybody, but, uh, there we go on what is the school would like to hang from the lamp posts. Cool, so I thought those were pretty nice. I would like to, uh, try to support the school on that, the school's, uh, they had a rough go, uh, in getting what they want to do with, uh, with planning and zoning provisions, I would say, in, in the, the last little bit, and so, uh, I'm trying to, uh, improve that and I, I think it's a nice idea and I would like to, uh, to do that. I'm going to try and share my screen to show photos that are in a different school, which is where we got that. Yeah. My screen shows a nice picture and I don't see it up there, okay? It's so small, I can't make it do away. Okay, well, I guess, you know, the technical difficulties are continuing to prevail here tonight. Uh, I did get some pictures, I will send them out to everybody by email from, uh, you know, Valerie. And they're essentially the same kind of banners that, that are posted at the school over in Scotland. And, uh, they look very nice, but they are certainly higher than 10 feet, which was max height allowed by our our regulations. The other thing that's kind of, uh, I guess pricked by our regulations and, uh, when we were coming up with these, we, we, you know, had some discussions with Mark Rance about if you don't want to regulate it, don't put anything about it in the regulation. And, uh, we do have a definition of a banner sign. We do have where a banner sign is prohibited, but in nowhere in there do we discuss where a banner sign can be hung. And so we could, uh, we could change that, I'm trying to, you know, get all, all fine things, try to figure out the downside, but, uh, I don't know what it would be and, and we could maybe modify that municipal buildings could hang banner signs as deemed appropriate. Another potential solution is we could call, you know, when you look at all the different signs we have in our regulation, what kind of sign is this as far as function? And it, uh, it could be deemed to be a public interest sign, which the definition of a public interest sign, I think it goes back to, uh, whatever the board of selectmen want to, uh, determine in the interest of the county. And, uh, and it can't be any bigger than 16 square feet, which this is not, it's two by four, so it's eight square feet. The, uh, so there's, uh, once again, there, there's a solution out there, I think the quickest solution might be to, uh, to go to the board of selectmen and say, uh, you know, we want to hang these signs as a public interest sign on all the lamp posts over there, there's nothing in that section that talks about how many signs could be hung. I think, uh, there's probably, Jared, you, you know how many signs we have, I think there's like 15, 20? One for each lamp post? Uh, Jared, like you do you have, Jared, do you need to hear it?
Here.
Can you hear me?
Oh, I can now, yeah.
Okay, um, I guess the original motivation to put that, those artwork banners up was that with all the construction for the community center, it was going to be a, a construction site nearby. And I think it was the desire of Taylor, the principal, to try to make the building and the grounds attractive. And Valerie saw those done up in Scotland where she also works and she's seen them in other districts. Um, they're, they are very attractive. They are not really selling anything other than the town of Andover and our school, which is something we can be proud of. And, uh, you know, you, you don't want to get into a, a, a spot where you're you're, you're irritating people, it's not the goal to irritate anybody, it's just to decorate the grounds and make the place feel a little bit more like home to the kids. Um, and their, and the community there. So that was the, the motivation behind it. Um, I was noticing there were signs, uh, banners, if you will, to the entrance of that business on Route 6. Right as soon as you cross over into Andover, they have them on the, on the ground and right at, at each side of their driveway, I, I forget what the, I think it's Network, it's called.
Yeah.
Yes.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, you know, they had them up, but I think the, that you have a sample there, people can see that they're really thoughtfully planned and done. And it's meant to be making the school, uh, more welcoming place and welcoming the kids, the people, the community and to promote the good values of this, of what we, we propose as a community. So I would appreciate everybody's support with letting Taylor put them up uh, prior to the first day of school. And I think you'll find that it's be very attractive.
How high would you like to hang? Jared, you know how high you would like to hang these banners or the, yeah, banner?
I, I think that we'd be open to hanging them at a level that people don't find objective, uh, that people find pleasing to look at. Um, I think that, uh, you know, we're, we're flexible, we just want, we want the place to look good.
Okay, no, I, I got it, um. I'm not sure that, that I can get around the issue of hanging them higher than 10 feet. And I personally think they would be better hanging higher than 10 feet, you know, if, if you were to hang them at 10 feet, that means the bottom of the sign is at 6 feet and I think that's too low, that invites people to, uh, jump up and whack the sign
Yeah.
Uh, that kind of thing, and so, you know, I really think it needs to be up to, uh, similar to what, what you've got in, uh, Scotland there, which I think is probably 15 or 16 feet, I think it's a 20-foot pole, four foot from the top, and then the, the bottom of the sign is eight feet from the ground, if, if I recall that, um.
Something like, I tried to draw, Jared, you have a pole that's nice, so it's centric in the middle? Would that work?
I think it would, but it's, but even that, so that is higher than 10 feet.
Probably, yeah.
And, and so if we're going to have to change the regulation or provide a waiver to the regulation, um, Um. That's not, you know, that is a lengthy process, as we saw when we tried to add municipal building to, you know, section five of the of the regulations. Uh you know, it takes a public hearing and all that kind of stuff. So I've got to, I will reach out to, is this A, Jerry? I I went out there, got on my step ladder tonight, hung it up to what I thought was ten feet high, which was about as high as I could reach up standing on the top of the step ladder. And and I didn't think that was is, I thought you would like it higher than that. If we're gonna do it, we should do it right. Uh it might not be able to get there by the the first day of school.
Well, I agree with you. If we're gonna do it, we gotta make it look good.
Yeah.
I I haven't seen them up. I haven't seen, I would have to physically go over there and look at the different heights that we could hang it and see how it looks. And I think that you're going over there and checking it out like that, I think, gives you a pretty good idea of what where when the way you would need to hang it in order to make a good appearance. So I I appreciate that, Jed, and I appreciate your going out and helping us with these banners to make it look, make the school the homey and welcoming and I think it'll be festive, especially in light of all the construction that's gonna be going on. So I thank you very much.
Okay, so that's all we're gonna talk about banners tonight. Go ahead, Eric.
I just wanted to say, I'm pretty sure I could get the board of selectmen to agree that this was, these were public interest signs in the interest of the town and get approval for that, or that's like fifteen point one, fifteen point something here? If that's the way the commission wants to go and you could get around that, that doesn't get you around your painting requirements, but if you wanted to put them up now, I'd be really mad that the board would have no problem with that.
Fifteen point five point one.
Yeah, basically it says, the town of Andover acting by the board of selectmen towards designated mayor and public interest signs of a size construction lighting being appropriate for the purpose, but in no event larger than sixteen square feet. So if they're left on sixteen square feet, it seems that the board of selectmen can just agree to their placement. Or authorize me to agree to their placement, either one, um and get that done. What that doesn't do is that doesn't get you around the issue of the height. Um that's a commission decision, how you want to proceed with that and afford that decision. But if you want permission from the board of selectmen, if you deem those public interest signs, I will get you that.
Okay, that well, let me get back to you on that, you know, if I'm trying to figure out if by size we can infer height, that's probably a stretch. It'd be certainly cleaner to add interest sign to a size, height, construction and lighting being appropriate for the purpose. But again, that's a that's a couple month process to get there.
I don't believe, Mr. Chairman, I'm like.
Here, go ahead.
So I don't want to start my first meeting with you, bending the regulations um too far, but I I think it might be a reasonable interpretation to like say that, you know, fifteen point four point four, which says no sign shall be hired at ten feet, could be referring to the the height of the sign from the ground, which is to say, you know, you can't have a ten foot sign mounted on a ground. And this, the height of of this, essentially the 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 vertical length of it is four feet. Uh. And as long as it's not a ten foot banner, hung at whatever level, you you could you could sort of with a straight face say, no, that's a four feet banner.
I uh understand that and uh, you know, I, but if you look at the the sign for Dollar General out there, you will note that it was constrained. I don't know how much angst on their part, if you know more than ten feet high. So we kind of, when we crafted that regulation, it was clearly plotted at the time to be that way. And I will ask Attorney Branch, what he thinks is the easiest way to uh resolve that dilemma.
You could also mount them at ten feet now, change the regulations and put them up higher.
And that would be something that, you know, we need feedback from the school. You you want to go through that, what it would probably do is you would at some point remove the bottom post because these signs, at least in Scotland, had a pole on the top of the sign and the bottom of the sign to hold it tight. And move the bottom pole to four feet higher than which now the top pole and that would put it right where you want it. And so um I couldn't tell from the pictures how it was, how they were attached to the pole and uh and so I guess I would uh ask Jerry for some feedback on how you plan to attach them and if that would be something that you would like to consider.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, I would consider. I I I mean, I'm open to anything that. And you know, if we can get them hung and then you want to have them moved afterwards, that I don't think that'd be a problem.
Okay, um.
What whatever makes it easy for everybody else.
Well, so at this point, I'll ask Eric to get the board of selectmen to consider these public interest signs. And we'll go from there. If you want to hang it higher than ten feet, um we can address that. I think there's probably gonna be another tweak or two to, you know, direct Eric's already mentioned, we're gonna have to do something with the height of the light poles and that, so it's another change coming down the road.
I appreciate your time. Thank you very much, Jed.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. Next up on the plan of conservation and development um is the next up to business is the plan of conservation and development and Marina, do you think it would be possible to call up from our website, the current plan of conservation and development? While we're doing that, did anybody, you know, I asked everybody to take a look at the first four or five sections. Did anybody have any uh any things that they got excited about with that or any big takeaways that uh you would like to share? Included the top one there, yeah. Okay, so is is everybody on the commission knows, I have struggled lightly to figure out, you know, how to proceed with the plan of conservation and development, how to get that rolling. Um John has certainly been willing to help with all he can, but it's something that I think, you know, I know where we want to end up. We want to have a good plan of conservation and development that says where we think the town wants to go and is roadmap to get us there. And once we figure out where it is that we want the town to go, I know John will be able to craft for us a fine document uh that gets us there. The um first thing that that I wanted to go through and Marina, do you can scroll down to page five? Right, right there, the plan will address the following theme. So if you scroll down just a little bit to get to the bottom of that. So I thought that was that was the uh the summary of what the plan wanted to do, protect our natural resources, protect our rural character, promote diversity in our housing stock. I read that to be because we're ninety percent single family homes. That meant to me affordable housing or workforce housing or senior housing. Yeah. Any of those nice, nice housing in town that didn't cost as much and let the let people start now and seniors have a shot at doing. Creating a town center with compact mixed use development. Uh that's that area around Center Street, you know, in it envisioned, you know, some shops with the apartments on top and and that sort of thing. Connecting Andover, this is uh this is Eric's personal favorite uh that uh you know, we've got some work to do to finish that up. We've made some good progress there. And then creating the identity and sense of place for Andover. And that's gonna be one of the chapters in your your homework for next week is to read that one. But but that essentially says, we want to maintain those rural properties that we've got, the rural atmosphere. Um. It was interesting to me that in that list, was there anything about economic development? And that could have been included by omission. Maybe the thought was we didn't want economic development. I did give some hints of that as I was reading through the document, but but we did have a chapter devoted to economic development and and they had some things that they wanted to do there. So maybe, you know, maybe we want to address that in the one going forward. The creating the town center, I always kind of thought that was a little bit of eye in the sky. Um certainly with our constrained business sections along Route Six. And we have some, you know, beautiful farms along Route Six that we want to kind of protect. And we've got some flood plain along Route Six. Building that from Route Six adds some advantages to it. I don't know that Center Street is is anymore the right place to do that. Will will allow, you know, the commission to uh to get in with that. But if that's what it said, the following theme were, and I think if we were to, you know, just click on that very subtly, um promoting diversity in our housing stock to promoting more affordable housing. I'm not sure what we want to say about the town center. Uh I'm interested in what the other commission members have there. Connecting Andover, continuing the complete street thing, I think is good, the identity and sense of place. We want to protect the natural resources and the rural character. The the first two and the last one are really all pocket the same thing. So there is a a heavy emphasis on not getting too much broken, that sort of thing. Anyhow, um after that, there was a bunch of demographic data for everybody to look at. What what we didn't have in this was the affordable housing thing. I went back and looked through that again. But right there, Marina, that is a great chart. That's the only other chart I wanted to show tonight. When we did our last plan of conservation development in uh twenty fifteen, there was the population growth trend for Andover. When we looked at the affordable housing plan, the population had leveled off. There were said, there, if you look online with the the state of Connecticut resources, you know, they're actually predicting a drop off in enrollment in uh drop off in population. That's uh, you know, based on, you know, a lot of the young families can't afford to live here right now and uh you know, our senior population is growing faster than most places than any other place in the state, whatever I read through there. But uh but anyhow, I'm interested in what is the current population trend? And also, uh, you know, what the what is the current school involvement? Because families are having fewer kids now. And and that is gonna be important as we make decisions about, you know, what's going on with the school. And then uh some some changes on the housing or updated housing demographics, which I think is gonna show that we're still predominantly single family houses. So, you know, when I look at at execution of our housing plan, it it depends on how you want to spin it. I can spin it, we got A plus because we hired John to uh to help us with affordable housing. Once he gets done with the plan of conservation and development, that's gonna be a little ways out there before we get to all that. Um. But if you look at actual things we've done to increase affordable housing, we haven't done very much of what we set out to do in that plan. So that's uh that was my review through the first couple chapters there, the demographics. The real reason that I wanted to get those first four chapters and then five and six are about the survey that we will do and then we didn't have anything in the survey for last time around. We'll we'll work on that after we figure out where we think the town wants to go and what are the questions we need to ask to validate that. Um is for the next part, the last two pages of the plan of conservation and development are the list of actions or recommendations that came out of that plan. And and so John crafted up a survey that I will send out to you and it takes each of those actions. And it says, you know, is it done? Is it in progress? Is it still important? Is it, you know, we haven't worked on it, but it's important? It's no longer important? Or I don't have enough data to to answer the question? And I know when you go through there and and I tried to uh answer the questions before we got here. And it's not a simple task. Uh if you look at the the second item down under chapter seven there and Marina, you don't have to scroll up to it. It says rezon areas of R forty to R eighty. Is that done? I know. We made everything R sixty, which I think is the intent. And so so I would, you know, I would list that one is yes, we we completed that. Um. But it's, you need to look at the questions as you're going through the chapters to uh to get a sense of of what it's saying and and even then you might struggle with some. And when when you get to those, just I don't expect it to be a research project or anybody, uh just put down that not enough info. And in some cases, we'll ask Eric to come back and because I think he's probably the smartest guy on why we did the changes the way we did them. He can probably shed some light on it and we'll see if that's something we're happy with where we are now, why we didn't do it in accordance with the recommendation from the plan and uh and go from there. But I'd like everybody to wrestle with, I'll send out the the uh survey tomorrow. Uh. I made myself a copy of these last two pages and it's broken down by chapters there so you can can look at the at the items um as you're reading that chapter, so you know what to focus on. And then when you get done, you can go out and check the survey, uh submit the survey, send that in to uh that will go into John, he can file all the data for us and tell us where we're at.
Can can I know something, Chair, Chad?
Yeah.
So um what's what's interesting about these? So these are organized chapters, seven, eight, nine, et cetera. And something that is is useful to note is that that there's a a little bit of a disconnect between those those six themes that Jed talked about and the topical chapters. So one of the themes is protecting natural resources. There is a natural resource chapter. Protecting our rural character. There is no protecting rural character chapter. Um, there is a housing stock diversity one. There's a town center. And there's a sense of place chapter. But then there are also separate chapters on managing future residential growth, which is probably where that, that rezoning comes from.
Yep.
Promoting and regulating commercial development. So there, even though that was only four themes, it shows up in the chapter. And then finally, there's a chapter on preparing for a significant older population. And that doesn't show up as a theme. So one thing I would suggest going forward, no judgment on the current plan, but to, to have the, have the substantive chapters flow back to the themes because it creates a little bit of a disconnect there.
No, that's a, that's a good point and, uh, I think it should flow one for one halls, but might not. And, and I do take that rural character when you read through the chapter on, uh, promoting. But it's the last one. Creating, identifying and a sense of place. You know, that is maintaining the rural character essentially. But again, the alignment between those bullets up front and the chapters in there. Uh, we might be able to help that out there. The other thing is I was reading through the questions. You know, there, there was a couple of times where a chapter 490 was mentioned. You know, on protecting natural resources, promote use of chapter 490 in open space waters. I don't have a clue what chapter 490 is. Encourage more to select them to adopt open space plan which would make all partials eligible for 490. So since I didn't know what that was and didn't want to do that research project either, I asked John to hopefully share a few words with us today about what, what 490 is.
So the very simple version is, it's referred to as Public Act 490, which is the state, the state, uh, bill that it was given when it was passed, um, about 50 years ago. It basically empowers towns to provide a, um, a, a tax incentive, a, a local property tax incentive to keep property undeveloped. It's not permanent designation, but, um, there are three categories, uh, farmland, forest land and open space. Uh, farmland and forest land each have acreage minimums that are set by the state. So if you've got a 50 acre tract of forest, you can enroll that through your local assessor for a period of 10 years where you say, I promise I will not develop this forest. I will not shop on the trees and I will not put up houses, will not develop there. Then the, the town basically says, thank you. Um, signed a little contract for 10 years and then you get a preferred tax, tax rate. So it's not, it's not taxed as a development law.
They were not prohibited from for, or even.
Correct, yes.
And you should.
And if you're, uh, if you're leaving for. Um, similar for farmland, um, where there's a state standard. Open space is sort of defined locally. Each town can kind of define what its open space tax advantage parameters are. A lot of towns say basically, if you live in a, in R80 zone or R60 zone, that's $60,000 square feet. If you have more than $60,000 square feet, say you've got four acres, you could set aside, you know, two and a half of that as open space and get a tax advantage on it. Um, and again, that's, it's just, that's, that's a temporary contract between you and the town. If you then choose to turn around and develop it, within that 10 years, you'll have to pay some back taxes in order to get out of it. But it, it's basically a, a temporary tax advantage situation to encourage people to keep their larger pieces of land undeveloped for a period of time.
Is that similar to your current use? Is that?
It's the, it's called use assessment.
Okay, I know I have.
Yeah.
Property of New Hampshire is current use. That's very similar.
Right.
That there's.
Yeah, it's essentially, it's essentially that.
Yep.
So, and so, so basically letting people know that, hey, you've got a big piece of land. We would like to see that, you know, at least in the foreseeable future. Stay open, stay forest. Stop. Make sure that people know. I, I, I find most large property owners, as soon as they get their act of, we, we, this program pretty quickly. But, um, but yeah, I mean, promoting it amongst those who can give the town some security in terms of its near term development.
So anyhow, that ought to, uh, ought to give us enough insight that we can answer the questions on, uh, as we go through that, uh, whether or not we like those ideas.
And can I add one thing? You give, I also want to push back a little bit. You said before that the town didn't do anything towards affordable housing. And I don't think that's necessarily correct. I think from a zoning regulation perspective, the commission has actually done a lot. You put in a set of regulations which allows mixed use development that was geared towards convincing market developers uh, that they could get a lot more. They agreed to have some housing, some rental properties associated with it. You enable cluster development, um, in most of the residential zones, uh, which allows smaller scale, potentially more affordable housing. And you really broaden the rules for what accessory development units are allowed. So within the regulatory framework, um, I think the regulations have actually come a long way towards promoting. The problem is, is it's still not something that the developers likely to actually do. And if it's going to happen, it's going to happen, the town isn't going to have the, it can't be a soft push. It's got to be a kind of a hard pull from the town to make it happen.
Okay, yep. And, and so I'll give you credit for all those regulatory changes. We'll give you B plus, A minus. I was looking at what we had done, you know, as a community since we issued the Affordable Housing Plan, which is minimal. We opted out of the accessory apartment things to make sure you couldn't put accessory apartment around the lake. That didn't help. Uh, so, so anyhow, we've, we've got some work to do. Uh, a lot has been done on the regulatory thing, but the actions that we have in our current plan from the Affordable Housing Plan, um, D minus. Sure. And, and I think that really is, you know, the, the issue of the decade is, uh, affordable housing, you know, it's going to be, it's only going to get worse or more important, I guess, uh, you know, as, as we're going forward. And, and so we've got to figure out how to crack at it, not just a little bit there. But yeah, I do think, uh, you know, I know that the Economic Development Group is interested in updating their Economic Development Chapter. I do think the, uh, you know, so that would be one of those summary bullets. And I think the, uh, the preparing for the older population that continues to, uh, be a very important thing for Andover. And there were plenty of action to the Affordable Housing Plan for how to, how to help that out too. I, I did read a article in the newspaper where we get to talk about all the grant money that, uh, the state was giving to towns to support people upgrading their homes so they could live in. And it looked like, you know, towns were out there doing that already. Certainly that was one of the actions was a, a fund that we were going to create where, where people could, you know, put ramps going in or grab bars and then give that, they pay back them and they eventually sold the house and that sort of thing. But, um, that's getting, that's getting off track for this point. So that's, uh, that's where I think we are with the, the plan of conservation development, you know, between now and the next meeting. And I'll, I'll send out a due date, uh, shortly before that. So John has the ability to, uh, co-link all the data and we can take a look at that in our, our next meeting coming up. Well, any other questions on plan of conservation and development at this point? Okay, you can close that out, Maria. Thank you. Moving on to whole business, uh, and I think it, uh, I mean, Catherine gave up on us, we didn't get there. But Jim, uh, tell us what we got going on with the Bradley pit.
Okay, there's been no action at the Brown pit. Prior to the last meeting, I had, um, attempted to, I had discussed with Bill Generation owner. His failure to comply with the plan, he made pretty clear he wasn't doing anything. So at that point, I, I tried to initiate discussion with Mark Branser. I think it's attorney, see where to go from there. And then shortly thereafter, there was the July meeting, at which point I was directed to, to extend the time to allow Generation to April 15th, which I did. Um, and he has. August 15th. Which, and I did try and schedule a meeting with him to show him exactly to stand up and, and show him what's on site. I don't know whether he's, well, how often he comes up, how often he looks at that. Wasn't able to do that for a couple of reasons. One, he has death in his family and I was away for two weeks. I do have an appointment scheduled with him for tomorrow morning at 11 o'clock. Um, and I'm, I'm still, I still intend to engage Mark. But I'm just sure where transpires tomorrow. That's my plan. I, I don't really, don't expect that he's, um, going to, to come into compliance with the plan. He doesn't want to spend the money, bring the topsy.
Okay. Any questions for Jim on where we are with Bradley pit? Seems kind of similar to the last one. Next item up is the approval of minutes from July 18th, 2023. And I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the public hearing and regular meeting from July 18th, 2023. Looking for a second. Thank you, Scott. Any comments on the minutes? And I had none. No comments, going once, going twice. I'll call for votes, Scott.
I am.
Ian?
I must have been here.
Jane, okay. Leanne?
Hi.
Susan?
Uh, I'm staying, I wasn't there.
Okay, and I vote I as well. Motion passes three, zero, two. With Ann from A and Susan England abstaining. Next item up is correspondence here.
No.
Next item up, administrative reports.
Okay, I have, uh, Lord is Route Six, Light, um, Barnett property is ongoing. They're working with Dennis O'Brien on that. Uh, but I notice, you know, it has been. Notice this has been said, um, I believe he's in the process of putting together a a lien to be placed on the, on the land records sent out. Let's see, uh, a number of projects that have commenced without permits that we followed up with and are coming into compliance. I have 241 Lake Road, Don Moser, uh, structure and infrastructure without a permit, scheduled for ZDA hearing tomorrow evening.
He's only asking for the structure that he's already built.
Yes.
Okay. And I know at one point he was looking to put a porch or, you know, center porch on the back.
He withdrew that.
Okay. And I guess, so when I looked at at that application, he was going from, I think the max mobile ad is 10% lock coverage up to 23%.
12, 23.
12 to 23.
Yes.
So I know that little, little shed doesn't count for 12% of his square footage. How did he get to?
That point? I don't know.
Okay.
Although he did have, he does have his previous parents for the addition, which he put on the phone. I think it's very possible that it just wasn't.
Okay, and yeah, it just dawned on me, I looked at that little shed and he was going from 12% coverage to 23% and said, wow. That's a powerful shed. But, okay, got it.
He was over. That's a good, good point, yeah.
Good.
Yeah, 5 Lake Road, construction without a permit. I do have a, a letter out to owners of 92 Merrick Valley Road regarding a number of abandoned vehicles on the road.
What was the address on Lake, where would you sit there with?
92 Merrick.
No, with 285?
85 there.
85, okay.
Yes.
Yep.
Um, now I also have on here the two churches, people like. And there's no, the two houses worship. There's no action as of yet. Is this the time to bring it up?
Right. There. Okay. As well, here's the heads up what's coming.
Two issues, 80 shy of a little, mountain, mountain of worship. This is a, uh, a church, place worship that's been there for probably 20 years.
What's that? That's one, more like four or five, two. Well, that isn't that any longer, but.
I, I have reasonably that is different, but that's, uh, it's been there for a while. Um, the problem is there's a lot of parking on the road, um, probably 40 cars at a time. I believe it's place, it's information I have. I don't know how accurate it is, but I believe it's fairly accurate. Um, I have not approached the government as yet. The, the, it's well advertised on, on the website. Um, my understanding that they were told by the commission to cut back on the number of cars. I don't see that as really a viable solution.
Urban shuttle people in from somewhere else, I believe, remember?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, it hasn't been the commission anytime recently.
Three years.
Yeah, well, certainly more than four or five years, uh, because, you know, I've been on. 27.
Well, surprisingly, I really didn't get any links, um, I believe Eric had complained and took a few pictures sharing. I, I have not heard directly. I, I do, I have her, like, senior, I think, about it. So in addition to that, um, I'll probably recall the Buddhist group that came in, looking at the property 131 and six. And we were told they needed special permit. For, and, um, house of worship there. Well, they bought it, they purchased it. And they never undertook the project, but they have started to use it, um, on occasion for worship. And I believe they, they put up a structure and they put up a of basically an accessory structure to cover, uh, a statue which might be inaccessible. And I did send them, but even on July 20th, I haven't heard from them. Well, I just wanted to initiate discussion with them to see them. And they should have a special permit in place, even if it's, I mean, as I, as I see it, I think what happened is they bought this thing, um, that they're at a price on it and very actually difficult to be developing it. It's, I think there's some weapons and it's going to be hard for them to put in a certain extended department. And they may not, so nonetheless, I think even what they do, they'll, they'll need a special permit. And I'll see it as a huge deal. I mean, it could be a special permit that, that's, that's, uh, they, they go after incrementally, meaning they, they can get it used and, and some components that are there. And then if they're able to, to convert the house into, it was a place of worship, kind of a place for their, their monks to live, that was the plan. And, um, so in follow up on that, but I, I'd like to sort of pursue these simultaneously. So that people, parents of, treating one differently than the other.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Where are you? The first house on the left there. Those people back in there.
I have nothing involved in that. No. I think I have, I have it on as much. I think I have I have it on as a monetary. I haven't really listened to her thesis since it says or something. That she was gay now, now she's back over there.
So. It's questionable whether he is living there. Um. The vehicle is back. And a couple of times I drove by there and I saw a light on. But since then, I have. In all attempts to knock on the door and actually contact her. And building pressures been out there and the not zoning, but the Eastern Highlands Health. District director has been out there. Um, and the fire marshal's been out there. And nobody's seen hiding no care of anybody. And now the car doesn't seem to have moved. So it doesn't, so it seems, it looks to me like instead of that coming back, he's just parked one more vehicle there than was there before. Um, so until we see actual signs that somebody is back living there or not, it could be. Uh, institute. Of the the primary problem with that, there there could be some. Very definitely could be some light enforcement if if. Uh, the zoning agent felt it's appropriate. But I mean, the the big problem with that house is that there's. No running water, no heating system that works. And it's a incredible, the disgusting warning situation. Um, so it's kind of a tripe act of of issues. So, but right now, there's still a a. Order making the fire marshal, there's a, uh, the building official has declared it. Essentially unfit and Eastern Highlands Health District has also. So that's where it stands and sat there for a year. Um, and the. Uh, it was a clear from the board of selectmen that there was not going to be support or offering her town support. To get some of that address that it cleaned up. So the town not participating, there's really not. Anything that I see that's gonna happen that will eventually she gets foreclosed on. Uh, and then something will probably be done, that would be, I guess.
Any other questions for Jim at this point? Now, following forward, you know, from the miscellaneous. Uh, while Jim was out. There's been some emails going around between Wendy Cop, Eric. Um. The over and over story. And I think they're using the house there. In addition to the the barn is. Commercial sales, retail. Space. He was concerned about, you know, is that? What was approved or what do we need to do to to make that right? Um. I looked through the files that I had at my disposal a little bit, my Jim has gone and it didn't find anything on that. I don't know, Jim, you had a chance to look at that today or not? Not.
I did.
Okay.
But I'm not sure what it combined. I mean, there is a, there, if you go back in the minutes, it tends to be. Uh, you know, they just say the application was approved and the application has really no. Information on it. Right. Experience, but it goes back, I. It's back to two thousand five, the minutes that I look at go back to two thousand five, although I I know that the. Gift shop pretty. There. Someone very sensitive. There.
Yeah, two thousand five was Jan Vasky, uh, real estate.
Yes, Jan, Jan Vasky.
Yeah, and that's in the, that was in the file, I saw that.
Okay.
But I know I saw nothing from Wendy. In the file. And.
Okay, I do have, and I'm okay, I do have minutes here. Wendy Cop. Um. But again, it's to start a business, retail business. Couple of questions. And that's it.
Okay, now here.
There's not even any action.
Yeah. She didn't.
For the. Well, there it is, new business.
Here we're called it.
I did too.
Right, yeah. So, so I can give you kind of a quick summary, so. Uh, Wendy and her husband purchased. So backstory, at one point. The yellow house in front was a real estate office, essentially. And they were kind of illegally having somebody live. In the back.
In the barn.
Barn there.
Um.
Um, and at some point. A previous CEO, uh, could, you know, make it clear to them that they could not be, they didn't have any authority to have anyone living in the barn behind their facility. So that person ended up out, the real estate doesn't move elsewhere, they sold it to Wendy and Eric Cop. They approached the commission. With a proposal for site plan approval, I think it was site plan approval. To utilize the barn. Uh, what they were asking essentially is can we go back to using the house as a house? Because it's more suited as a house than it is in anything else. And use the back barn area. Um, as such a retail sales operation for over a year. Uh, and they presented us a site plan at that time. Um, the town, the commission was. In agreement that that was a reasonable use of the property, and I think we just granted that as a site plan approval, I think that was. You know, quite a while ago, so my memory could be incorrect. Uh, then that was basically the history of that project. Since then, they had. Uh, people living in the house. And they have additionally been running the retail sales. Uh, operation. Um, in the back. And then as far as parking goes, the board of selectmen at one time. Um, agreed to overflow parking, al- allowing to use the existing town parcel right next door. Parking business. And that, to my understanding, is still in the back.
Okay.
Actually, for the record, it's in the industrial zone.
Yeah. So. My. Comment to Wendy, you know, she had a film group coming out on August twenty first to do some, uh. One of the Google stories that that they put, you know, on the TV news kind of thing. She didn't want to have. The film in the house and then to say, oh, you can't. Use that. I say, well. I don't know how, uh. What the path is to get approval for when you're doing. But if you're in an industrial zone and you have retail and it's both in the barn and in the house and nobody's living in the house. I see nothing wrong with that. We just gotta get the paperwork right to support it. And so that's what we're off to do now. And Wendy, you know, she said, well, we applied for. A. Retail business. And then something came back later, the follow on meeting. And it talked about. A home occupation business. But she thought that might be a typo because that's not what they were doing. Anyway, it sounds like maybe the right answer is to, uh, to just get a new permit. To go, and I don't even think it needs to be a special permit for as little of retail spot as that is. And I don't think there's any big public interest, you know, one way or another, and you just need to get. The site plan that talks about, you know, what they're doing and get a document. I don't. Retail sales.
Correct, there's retail sales in the home.
Yeah. And nobody's living in them. It's two apartments and that, right? I think it's all over, yeah. I'll go back and ask more questions if you can get a hold of her.
I can research it.
Yeah.
I don't think she needs.
But she provided the date for what was in the minutes, which you read and had a lot of detail there. And.
It just had, there's no action on it. The minutes, the minutes, I don't know what happened in the meeting.
Okay.
Well, we very definitely, the commission very definitely approved that.
Right.
Uh, the minutes may not do a good job of requesting it. But somewhere there, you should have record of. A site plan approval. Uh, for the business in the back and explicit approval to have people living in the house and in the business in the back. Um.
So that's just like home occupation thing, even though it was. Uh, not a business, but people lived in the home.
Well, that might have been how we. How the commission actually bought it permitted. Um. As we know now, the regulations are more flexible. About living and having businesses in both the commercial and industrial zones. Than they were prior to that. And that was one of the things we both addressed. When we changed that regulation.
But I think she, yeah. I'm going on memory, but I'm pretty sure she said there's nobody living in the house now.
I mean, is it alternative to to a special permit? I could, I could put together. Sort of, and I have seen this done before, and let's say it's. I I wouldn't get. I wouldn't have a town turn away, but just sort of document what what this history is and what what approvals have been made. Um. Give you just a sort of baseline.
It's like you need new site plan. Yeah.
There, there is a site plan, well, if we, yeah, because it has changed. I mean, it's changed tangibly. That's part of the problem. I mean, it's changing over the course. I mean, I think it goes way back before two thousand five. Um, it's.
I don't know, all all I go is.
And I don't know why she's not using the house as, like. You know, do I have a vacant unit there that they still sent to me?
I think, I didn't know there were two apartments, but she wanted to expand the business.
I believe they're, what they're basically doing is saying. What they want to do is expand the business and use both the house and your areas. All together as essentially like an artist collector. If they're.
Then definitely, they they need. They should have a special permit. It's no longer. Sort of a home occupation in the, in the industrial with a house. That's really.
Look, you're allowed to have a retail establishment. In the industrial zone.
By a special permit.
Yeah.
I don't.
I don't.
Isn't that site?
Or cycling.
I'm sorry. I think that's likely that's just.
Cycling, okay, I'm I'm going back to.
It's like, go general, the cycling approval. We had a public hearing and all that, and you guys are the interesting.
Right.
So if she's looking to proactively abandon the residential component, which is to say the home occupation bar and go entirely retail. Then that's, that's her proactive decision and that's.
Yeah, exactly. Go ahead, guys.
Uh, but I I think you should also, based on our current regulation. You could, you could probably explicitly be allowed. To have second floor, you know, like a second floor apartment there occupied and business on the third floor. And business in the back in that zone, where our regulations are written now.
Okay, well, I will, I will email her back tomorrow. I'll include you on it as a copy due this time as well. And I told her that I didn't think we were going to require her to move all her stuff out of the house, put it on the street.
Okay, I'll try to get a better handle. What she has and what she's doing there.
I told her, you know, it was not an urgent crisis. We would make the paperwork right and she could keep doing whichever it is she's doing there now, because it sounded pretty reasonable. Okay, I knew that. That's all that we had in zoning agent, inland weapons, water course agency, nothing, uh, nothing that would be pertinent to the. Planning and zoning commission, going on there. Next item up, public comment, Jerry, you've stuck with us a long time. You got any comments for us before we. We journey here tonight?
I just want to thank you for your time. And for the work you do, I appreciate you, Jen, and for your commission and all that they do for us. Thank you.
Okay, well, if you have any knowledge. Thank you. Uh, I just have a couple of things to say.
Yeah.
Are you ready to meet?
Yeah.
Okay, so kind of on behalf of the board of selectmen. The, the board, like formally asked the planning and zoning there to consider a regulation change. Related to science. Now, obviously, you're considering the one relevant banners. Specifically one that the, the board of selection would like, they would say they'd like the ability. On the veterans monument field. To be able to essentially allow businesses to put up banners along with fence. Which is a pretty common practice, you know, in athletic fields and use that money to offset the cost of owning and maintaining the fields. Um. Our current regulations. Would, would allow, uh, basically via special permit to put up one single sign. Uh, so that the, the board of selectmen would. Would like the zoning commission to consider a regulation change that would enable that. Uh, whether you just restrict it to municipal properties or how you do that. You know, it would be a commission decision, um, you know, I'm sure that. You could get further clarification from the, from the board of selectmen. Uh, it could feel needed, but that's both limited what the board would like you to consider. Uh.
Do you know what the size of the? Things?
What?
You know, you like banners.
Oh, well, some are.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the sixteen square feet per banner. Would be perfectly acceptable to the board. Um, the existing, if you look at the existing chain like fences, they're basically five feet high and ten feet wide. So if you set your one banner on each one, you know, something, you know, in the sixteen to twenty four square foot. Would fit and look appropriate. Um, I I think the board would be fine living with sixteen square feet per banner. Um, if there was a regulation change that could allow multiple banners on the same property. But I also realize that that. You know, may require input from the town's attorney because you don't necessarily want to. To, our regulations are very specific in commercial. Areas about what is allowed in terms of if many of multiple businesses on the property. So, but that would be what the board would like you to consider.
Okay, um. Yeah, the. The other concern with the regulations is that, you know, we don't allow billboards, which is anything greater than thirty two square feet. Um.
Offsite.
Okay.
And offsite, uh, the ball. The ball field of the offsite, so.
Yeah. I thought there was a regulation in there that said no business can put up a sign. Offsite. And I couldn't find.
And if the board is applying to be an offsite.
Yeah. So you could have thirty four foot one offsite.
Yeah, and it wouldn't be no. I know this come up, I'm really concerned about content. Um. You know, what are you, who's gonna advertise on there? We'll hold on feathers. Are you? Why do I have your hats in there?
You can't really.
So, okay.
With the exception of, uh, obscene or measured marijuana, I think.
Okay.
But if it's a town leasing space, the town would have all the discretion to to sell it and not.
Okay.
Um, but I I would suggest, not to interject myself, to do this, but. If you wanted to do this somewhat surgically, you could allow this specific category of sign. As an accessory used to meet with the public regulations. The same thing, Paul, invite. Here. So we do it.
I knew. There was gonna be a little give and take if there are kind of. Putting up the public interest sign at the school or.
Well, I'll be honest, I'm a lot more in favor of the public interest signs at the school than I am of advertising in ball field, but that's not my. That's board of selectmen. Proposal, not a Eric proposal.
Okay, well, we understand the request, we'll. We'll think about that and I guess be. Okay, well, we understand the request. We'll we'll think about that and I guess the the next step might be where the town submits a a change request. Is that how that would go?
Well, so we could, the town could formally submit a request for a regulation change. Um but I think one of the things, as I was thinking about it this afternoon, one of the reasons I'm hesitant to do it is the sign regulations are pretty complex. And I can tell you what our intent is, but I can't necessarily tell you how I think you should get there. I mean, I could, but I don't necessarily know that that's the way you want to get there. If you want me to do that, um and formally do that, I will. Um but that's, so if you want a formal application, I would I would present one. If you don't, then you can take it verbally and run with it. We could do that here.
Well, I always like having something to work with that starts us off. Another option, you could ask John to craft something that it's what you want to accept. That or instead on both of them.
EXC or ACC?
EX. The E P T, X bat on municipal.
Oh, right, as a as a, right. So I mean, just as a just a minor wrinkle, and I I don't know, this this is an interesting dialogue to see. I don't know how your commission generally likes to consider text amendments. Um if if you, as you say, perhaps something to be reactive, but does that mean you want the selectmen to submit a formal application, which the nuance is if they submit a formal application, you're bound by the state statutory time frames? You know, to thirty-five, sixty-five, thirty-five. If it's a commission initiative, which is to say the planning of the mission is the applicant, you can take as long as you want on it. So to a certain extent, strategically, I don't know, if for a second thought was we'd like to see this done by the law or something like that, there's a strategic advantage in having statutory time on for it for you.
I wish it was based on, but the only change that the town has ever requested being presented to us, here's what we'd like to see.
And all written out.
Yeah, that was very, it started out very easy and improved just a little bit. It had the potential. They had a lot of stuff and period back.
But yeah, but some middle prompt could be, there's some starter language to say, okay, this is maybe what we'll get the selectmen's goal met.
Yeah.
Present it as a point of discussion.
Yeah.
Instead of, okay, we're ready to turn this into an actual application to do that.
Because one of the thoughts I had on the banners is we could say, you know, municipal buildings get post-bannered, X number feet high.
Yeah, because also just typically opt out municipal uses completely from one, I don't wanna go there. I know we can do that, but but you could in the regulations just opt out municipal uses from the signage regulations and leave it up to the discretion of the town if you trusted the town enough to do that. Um you know, that would be the the simplest way.
Simple. Let's take the next week on the public interest line. That just gives a little bit more latitude to the board of selectmen. If we didn't like the way it went, we'd go, I was changing back. But yeah, that would be where I saw that going with respect to the school banners is the giving more latitude to the board of selectmen, you know, we we trust them on wide base. We ought to be able to trust them with what kind of science they put out. Then pretty small on the big scale there. But
Right.
you know, look at that, consider it that. But if you add a deal for, you know, how many wood size um anything that the board of selectmen are looking at, it would certainly be up.
Could be up to ten.
Right? Was that something you?
It could be up to ten.
Okay.
That section, that's kind of saying that goes.
Yeah, I mean, we've got more than ten banners going up, but you could kind of apply the same kind of thing with the school only gets to put up one banner. And I didn't think that's, that's not the right answer either. So I was kind of hoping that, you know, we come up with something that gives the board of selectmen more discretion on those signs and if they want the, you know, the planning and zoning commission to to make the recommendation to them, you know, we can do that to, but we don't have to roll that tonight. That gives us, we're thinking about it, where it wants to go.
Okay, I know where you wanna go with that. So so I will. Uh if you would like a formal application, his own intention or rate change, I I can provide that.
Okay. Any, anything else on public comment here? Well?
Catherine Hutchinson, would make the way on.
Who's her?
Catherine Hutchinson.
Oh, Catherine Hutchinson, did you have a comment for us? Did you have it? She's not muted from here.
She came on and came off a couple of times.
Okay.
I just wish she was back up there.
Okay, I will continue on and if she joins us before the end of the meeting, I would like to comment here. One other topic in miscellaneous that I wanted to at least make the commission aware of and and I think most of the commission members are probably aware that the annual elementary school was trying to get the upper parking lot paid. And there were, you know, several questions that came up with with respect to the doing that. I think, you know, most of the issues involved, where are the proper financial, you know, paths for allocating the money to go and that kind of thing. Um Eric asked me if I thought that was a planning and zoning thing because we've got parking regulations and that might be an opportunity to, you know, require fewer parking spots or, you know, stuff like that and and I chose based on the fact that the parking lot was already there approved. Um and only a small section of the entire parking lot was gonna be repaved. And quite honestly, I thought that was a a good deal for both the the town and the school to have the school pay for it. That I did not see that as a planning, the zoning commission item to address. You know, we didn't have to go get them to submit an application and we go through approval and that. They're just essentially redoing in its entirety the the parking lot up there. At least that's what they would like to do. And, you know, public works got some involvement in on some things that that we would have probably liked to have seen, which is the, you know, erosion and sediment control plan that we're and they got that one something that's kind of low in the middle of the parking lot there and make sure that when all the asphalt's picked up, we have a storm, it doesn't go running down the the drain there. And the public works was interested in, you know, the the construction process, how many layers, what kind of curvy, all that kind of stuff. And I didn't think that was the detail that we as a commission, you know, wanted to get involved. So I said, we would not get involved with that. But if anybody thinks I usurped my authority by saying that, I'm happy to get that feedback and consider that for future events. And I said, when when they wanted to redo the rest of the parking lot, the answer might be different because, you know, it's not a not a real short fuse kind of thing that you know, we might want to make some changes to reduce the number of parking spots changing and that sort of thing. So anyhow, I did I did that and wanted to let everybody know that I had done that. Um I think a little out of sequence here, you know, the next regularly scheduled meeting is Tuesday, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. That is the third Tuesday of the month. We're into into that now and any other miscellaneous topics from any other commission members before we adjourn tonight? We had anything for us? Kevin or Susan?
No.
I'll say here.
Okay, very good. Um with that being said, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Scott seconds and all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes five zero zero. Thank you, everybody. I apologize for the the technical difficulties. I would have thought by now we had it worked out in the system. We spoke out of you. We'll see what we do about it. Few of my know how fix, few of my know how fix, but we'll try to do better next month. Thank you very much. Excellent. Good night, everyone.
Night.
All right, the groundbreaking ceremony for the community center at noon right here.
Thank you, Eric. I meant to bring that up.